If I can have your attention, please. Welcome to the meeting in CBA at June 13th, 2017. My name is Marty Anthony, the chairman. And my last vice chairman is Mr. Cervais. All members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Franco. In the back, the head of inspection services, Mr. Duka. To my right, the clerk, Ms. Murphy. If you have a cell phone or a pager, can you please put it on silent or vibrate not to interrupt the meeting? If anyone's going to testify today, please stand up and raise your right hand. If anyone's going to testify today, please stand up and raise your right hand.
You swear to the truth about the truth that helps you die?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I have a few things here. We got a clear up some stuff for us. CBA case number 16011, 60 Cleveland Court. They have a motion and a letter here so we can have a motion for a six-month extension.
This is Chairman, CBA case number 16-011, 60 Cleveland Court LLC. Jillson Taylor, manager. I'm making a motion to grant a six-month petition, uh, extension to the case that we heard.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Before we do anything, is Warren Place, the African's Warren Place? We have a problem. We have three other four people that are here. One, Mr. Himmel, has heard all the testimony but didn't sit on. If you allow him to vote, he can sit here tonight, or we're going to have to put it off for a month. Yeah, Paul. This is, this, uh...
Riddell.
Riddell, who's not there.
All right, yeah, we'll take it, we'll take it tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under case number 16085, 92 Valley Moore Street, they have a letter here that they want to continue for two weeks, June 27th.
The chairman, man of the 16-085, Todd Eager, for a special permit bearing to erect a new nine-bedroom residential building on ground level. On the premises number 902 Sag was through, please make a motion to continue the hearing June 27th.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. I have another letter here, Z-1737, 153 Bayside. The request of the council, he wants to have a meeting, he wants to move it for two weeks.
The chairman, man of the 16-085, Todd Eager, for a special permit bearing to erect a new nine-bedroom residential building on ground level. On the premises number 153 Bayside, please make a motion to extend the hearing June 27th.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor. Opposed, so move. Under tonight's agenda, Z-1738, Warren Place. Warren Place, here. What we did is, uh, we put this off for two weeks to read our prints, to look at it, to see what was good for the neighborhood personally. Uh, I want to thank Mrs. Stewart for giving me a book and it talked about 40B enplacements for 40B, to make them look like the neighborhood. Kind of like the parking, I don't like the size bit, I don't think it fits in the neighborhood, so I'll be voting no. So, Brian?
Likewise, Mr. Chairman, I looked at a similar sized property on Newbury Avenue, um, and I looked at the shadow study, um, as a result of those, also we voted no.
I went down to the location on two occasions. I walked around, I drove around different times of the day. I think the project's ask proposed too large.
I went to the property a couple of occasions, it is too large, the parking is insufficient, and I didn't like the engineering doc, design to the off-site water migration either. Thought it was insufficient for the property. I'll be voting negative as well.
Mr. Brian, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, regarding case number Z-17-38, Warren Place LLC, for a comprehensive permit to develop a conditional-style building containing 40 rental units, including 10 rent-restricted units, and 38 pocket places on the premises number 54 to 56 Warren Avenue, and 60 to 62 Warren Avenue, and 118 to 120 Old Colony Avenue. I would like to make a motion to deny the request.
On the second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. Thank you. Please, 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 please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Remember that this proposal was reduced to 32, so I think you need to vote against the 32.
It's the motion that was on the floor and it was, it's original with Warren, we brought it down to 32.
So I think you should deny this 32, for the record.
Aye. Well noted. Change the motion to 32, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Can I bring something?
Sure.
I appreciate the attorney's comments, uh, but the applications for 40 units, the, the offer was to bring it down to 32.
Right.
We did not reapply at 32, so therefore we wouldn't be in the...
What you did, what you did is you changed the plans, you asked us to change the plans to 32, so I'll argue that. I'll argue that, of course, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Rather than have tonight's business, Z-1740, 14 Chase Street. We already heard that morning when you have a new set of plans? Yeah, we have a new plan out here. One second, we're just going to see the satellite. Are you giving the set of plans, name and address for the record, please?
Uh, my name is David Yann, 14 Chase Street, 14269.
Now, you're going to change these plans, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gave you David one, so what is going ahead now?
All right, what's the difference?
So the difference is on, um, so for your request, as well as Mr. Duka's request, uh, or suggestion, on the, on the second floor, it was originally three bedrooms, we reduced it to two. So the total number of bedrooms was, would be three. Originally, we had proposed four bedrooms. It was one main floor, it was three on the second floor, but we reduced it to two on the top, one on the bottom. And we, on, on, uh, main floor, we, uh, removed the wall that separates the kitchen and whatever you want to call the living area, um, just making it open. It's just, it's just...
What do you do for the parking?
The parking, uh, we haven't, we haven't changed anything with the flooding. You had an issue with the flooding because of the bedroom, so we reduced it by one. Take it out of it.
Any questions in the African, since you changed the plans?
Uh, I don't have any.
No question? Three bedrooms total, correct? I'll be voting, David.
I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Likewise.
In favor. How's the motion placing?
This is Mr. Chairman, the man of the Z-17-40, toy loom, high web, very, very, to construct a second floor additional premises on the fourth and Chase Street. Please make a motion to grant a bearing with three bedrooms.
Just second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number Z-1746, man land for variance fine, constructing additional living space on the premises number five Main Street. The African, their representative, again. Name and address for the record, please? What's the total number of bedrooms you're going to have now?
Uh, okay, four.
Two bedrooms each?
That was this? What we've got each floor? Two bedrooms and a second floor.
It's a single-family home, correct?
Yes.
But you're acting like the basement, you put two bedrooms down.
The two bedrooms, they only have about, um, basement, we have two right now, we tried to take the one, and after, we finished the three bedroom.
It says two, I should have done.
Yeah, we did the next thing, the basement.
There's two in the basement.
And then the other one has three, and a second floor, and a bedroom. Three bedrooms, please.
Did they give us an option?
Is there a way to get out of the basement, the door, to get out of the back?
Uh, yes.
It's almost like you shut that off to make it a two-family house, correct?
I think what we asked you to do is give rid of the bedroom first in the basement.
Is that sound familiar? I don't, I don't. It's too original.
Run up the question, both, uh...
The store.
The store.
Store.
It's not.
It's just a... Yeah, it's, it's, it is, but you could, you could draw the door from any place to do that, to get out of the basement, you know, it's my problem to say, as long as it's inspected and...
Mr. Chairman, I did meet with the Africans.
Yeah.
Uh, they're going to change that bathroom to a half bathroom.
Uh, yes.
Oh, downstairs?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, I'm happy that... That's good. All right, I guess we got our question, yes. One, one bedroom down, three upstairs, four bedroom, but it's got a half bathroom on the space. So we'll make the motion to add stairs with a half bathroom, I think. I'll be voting in favor with that condition.
I'll be voting in favor.
Yeah. With that condition, yes, sir.
Frank?
Agreed.
Chairman, the man of the second, oh, I can't get the Z, Z-17-46, then land for a variance fine, construct additional living space on premises number five Main Street. Uh, we grant the variance fine, under the condition that in the basement, there will be, the ground floor plan, will be a half bath.
One bedroom.
In one bedroom, and the four bedrooms total.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, Z-1751, Jeanette Curry and Eric Avravich. For variance to remove three-season porch deck and construct a two-story addition in the back. Name and address for the record, please?
Eric Avravich, 94 Upper Street.
Jeanette Curry, 94 Upper Street.
Why don't you tell us what you're going to do?
So in our top house in the back, we have a three-season porch deck that exists, and we want to take that down. We want to go out of initial heat to heat, staying within the plan, but within the house going out back. The current porch and three-season deck does not extend all the way left to right across the house, we want to fill that in, fill it initially.
So it's going to end up a garage downstairs?
Um, probably not going to use it as a garage, but, I mean, it's just going to be getting stuff in and out, building bikes, bikes and stuff, but I don't, I'm not going to use it for cars. So the garage doors may only stay in...
And what are you doing with the paving back? You doing any more paving down?
I don't think I need to do the extra paving back there.
Because I saw it on here.
I don't think we need it, because I don't want to use it as a garage, we have plenty of parking in that area, because we already probably get eight cars, and we had two, so...
All right, so everything but the parking, everything but the new paving? Thank you, if you have a seat. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor. First call, second call, third call, close. Letter? The letter from the DTW, we review the above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call. Third call, close. I think it's nice, if you spend some money in the neighborhood and make a nice home lot, how many votes do they have?
I will be too, Mr. Chairman.
Likewise, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, please.
Sure. Why did you say the name?
The case number Z-17-46, or, I'm sorry, Z-1741, I think you're right there.
51.
Where are you from? Jeanette Curry and Eric Avravich, for a variance to remove three, three-season porch deck and construct a two-story addition on the premises number 94 Upper Street. Please make a motion to grant the bearing, also.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Case number Z-1752, ID Sign Group, for variance to install an oversized panel sign on premise number 77113 Quincy Ave. The African, their representative, there.
Evening.
Name and address?
My name is Scott Cashman from ID Sign Group.
Okay, Chief, I'm from ID Sign Group.
Paul Mummery, he has our management company.
Address?
Uh, the address. My address is 9 Russell Drive in Eastern Mass.
9 Russell Drive, Eastern Mass.
30 Adams Street, no.
Thank you. Give us the floor.
Okay, what we're, uh, our client is seeking, requesting the installation of an oversized, uh, multiple tenant panel sign, which will bring exposure to three new retail businesses. The pylon would be set back in the, in the exact footing of the existing sign, angled perpendicularly to the street, and non-disrupted for the vehicles of line of sight. The building is being supplemented, creating room for law occupants, having a single panel sign was once adequate for a single tenant. The future tenants will be limited by no storefrontage, all their entrances are on the parking lot. There is no frontage on Quincy Avenue. The additional leasing spaces are not facing the main road, they are only visible from the parking lot. We believe the pylon will help minimize congestion as it is located in a large property with multiple parking lots, entrances, and throughways. It will facilitate, would look, uh, facilitate the location awareness during traffic, peak traffic during the, uh, two parking lots in the property. So basically, the building is located with two parking lots on either side of the building. It's a very large building, there's two pylons on the side, there's a, there's a single standing sign and a separate sign 300 feet away, that you cannot see either side from different ways of traffic.
Well, I got questions, I, I mean, you have a sign that's 10 feet for advertising plus, plus another about 100, I think. How tall is the whole sign?
16 feet.
16.
It's going to be exactly, if you see this, on this board here, it shows the two sides are the same height.
I mean, really, it's massive, why couldn't you come down, smaller something, like, uh, each tenant get like 15 inches or 12 inches? You got one-foot sign to tell you are there, bring this sign, not 16 feet high that could be seen, I don't know, coming over the hill.
If we were to reduce the size of the entire monument sign, that would reduce the size of the panels. Bring in copy text, a lot smaller than it would be here, and you wouldn't get a very good, um, line of sight from a far distance, being that it's a four-lane traffic highway.
I think it's massive.
Well, just if we think about the legibility of letters.
I, I can think about it all day. And you know what? I see that sign, and I see that, and it's just, I don't think Quincy needs signs that big. My, any question on the floor?
Can I just?
Let him speak.
All right. What would be the other side? There's going to be two sides.
Yes.
There's currently two sides of those full states.
So the tenants on one parking area would have the, the space on that side, tenants in the other parking area, the space on the other side.
And there's going to be no change on the sign in front?
No.
Will be a sign.
No.
Why is the size of that side, the height of that?
We didn't build that total height.
Is it, is it similar in size to what you're talking today?
It's small, it's a little bit smaller, and it's, it's two single poles with a box.
And how many, uh, tenants are on that side?
Two tenants.
Two tenants on that one. So this would be, you want to have four tenants.
Correct. The, the Citizens Bank space is being supplemented.
Yes.
So now it's going to have four tenants in that side of the building. So there's basically six tenants in the entire circumference of the building, it's, it's a pretty large building.
Not to mention those tenants will have no roadside exposure, their frontage is running vertical to the power.
There's a tenant in there now that has no signage whatsoever, there's...
Yeah, there is, there's no people there.
Right, right. We painted up the awning back there, at one point, we painted up the awning with the letters, just so people would realize it's not Citizens Bank. That's the biggest thing, is everybody knows that building is Citizens Bank, so they're going to reduce the footprint, and have multiple tenants in there, and then the tenants are going to be locked, because they're not Citizens Bank. And the other thing about legibility, I just wanted to bring it up, is, and that's bad, I drive down there a lot, I know you all too, due to as well, and as cars are coming down, there's two lanes. So if you're on the wrong lane, you need some time to get over to the right lane, especially this time of day, with the bridge doing, what it's doing, um, so if you're not in the right lane to get into that parking lot, you're going to go right by it, now you're in, it's just, you need that eight-inch letter, that's what it really comes down to. If you've got a three-inch letter, people can't see it, you can't see it from the inside, eight-inch, eight-feet...
So that's, this would be the eight-inch letter.
Correct. That, that gives you 80 feet of legibility. You know you can't make that much, 80 feet happens quicker.
Just, the Citizens Bank sign, it's there now, just so I can get some perspective, how big do you say, you're, I mean, here, how big are those letters? How big is the capital B in Bank, the capital letters?
Those are probably 10 to 12 inches.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just, what you're saying is that you're looking at cars coming down the hill or coming up towards the Ave. And you're saying they, they won't see the sign, it's a signalized intersection. So my way of thinking is that everybody has to slow down there anyway, and there's, one way or the other, either on Quincy Ave, you have to, you have to be aware of the signal in there, and the, the sign is part of the landscape that you're going to see when you come into that intersection. I don't, I don't understand why it has to be so big when people are slowing down, when they come to the intersection from all four sides.
I've come out Water Street?
Yeah.
At times, and I'm watching, it's like Indianapolis 500, when you take that right on Water Street, you want to go towards Washington Street, you go in, you zigzag, you know, if you know what you're doing, you go right through. People that don't know where they're going are going to get lost in that, if they're not in the right lane at the right time, you've got cars cutting people off, it's dangerous, it's a dangerous situation, that's a dangerous hill, anyway.
I don't think a bigger sign's going to make them go any slower.
Well, it's not really, no, I, I used to get the letter size, that's, you know, and then aesthetically, it's a much nicer looking size, it's not just two poles, you know, a sign box thrown on two poles, and, you know, at least it's an aesthetically pleasing sign. Has yards willing to put the money into this, to make it look nicer for, for everybody going by. I know it's a large aside, but it's not taking up that much more space. If you look at the pole on the Citizens Bank side, it's already skirted, it's, it's probably a 24-inch wide skirted pole. Basically, all you're really doing, you're adding the pole, you're adding an address, which is important for everybody, so they know you're at 85 Quincy Ave, so the police can use it, fire can use it, but also you've got your, the sign is there, to get people into their, you know, their spaces.
I have a question. Um, access to the parking lot, is there access into the parking lot before the sign and after the sign?
The two separate parking lots, no, it's just, they're not attached. They're not attached, no.
And what, what are you proposing for lighting?
Internal, internal light.
Pardon me if you, if you missed that, um, you know, to go to the next entrance, what people do is they go into the next entrance, they go into the residential neighborhood and come out.
That's constant, and it's a one-way to the other side, so you, you're going back up the Water Street, I've seen people do it.
How difficult would it be to, uh, connect to parking lots?
Impossible, because there's a street behind there, it's a residential neighborhood behind it, and the building takes up the entire footprint. You definitely don't want the car spilling into the neighborhood, it's a nice quiet little neighborhood there.
What's the difference between what's permitted, what this zoning ordinance is, and this sign?
75 square feet is permitted, this is 116, so what's the difference?
More than 20, I think, well, 35% more, like, be larger than what's permitted.
Right, but we're adding the, we're adding the address, which is huge in that area, nobody's got addresses. And then, it's also just the aesthetic look of the sign itself, and in, in truth, we're not even, if you look at the Citizens Bank side, we're not increasing it really that much, that, well, the pole there is 24 inches wide. We're just adding the tenants on, they would make it a nicer sign.
And I think, and I think the key is, is no, that we don't have the benefit of, benefit of, of frontage there, where you're going to see ABC Retail, ABC Drag Kings, whatever, you don't see that, it's, but it's only from the sides.
This is their only mark.
Except for Citizens Bank, of course, they have a corner spot, on the desk, on the other side.
People ask where Hill wanted, and then nobody knows where Hill wants. It's actually in the, in the parking lot on the second side.
You all set? Question is, thank you, can I have a seat? Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. Other ones, none? Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call? Counselor, you want to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board for the record, Brad Crow, City Council, 65 Gay Street, um, also representing the aforementioned neighborhood that I heard here referenced, uh, this, um, this evening. I also live in the neighborhood, so I'm intimately familiar with the, with the setting. First off, I just want to say, because I do believe in property management, how about property management? As many times we've ever dealt with an issue, they've been fantastic, I think that's just worth noting, because sometimes we hear the opposite, you know, the conduct, the good conduct is, I do, based on some... I do, based on some sentiment that I've been provided with from the neighborhood, have some concerns relative to the height of the sign. You know, I actually connected in with the, you know, Mr. Duke here to help me sort of work through the mechanics, because as you all know, I don't, you know, engineer or read that stuff, so. But if you have to play one on TV, right, John? But I guess my point is, you know, I wanna be able to, you know, help businesses, grow their business, but I just wonder, based on what I'm hearing coming out of the board, if there's an opportunity to, you know, reconfigure it in a more.
Shrink it a little bit?
Shrink it down a little bit. I just, I think it's a lot, knowing the sign is, it's already there. I do think, right, if I have a business, I'd wanna be identified as well, but if I live in a neighborhood, you know, I don't wanna look out my front lawn and, you know, see a sign. So I know we've all had our experiences with signs and billboards here. So that's, that's basically what was provided to me from the people.
Change some councils around.
Correct. So, you know, being the more council than I am, I try to connect with folks, and, you know, so that's, that's the feedback provided from the neighborhood. And you guys will do the voodoo that you do, and, you know, appreciate just taking those comments under.
Thank you, council, I needed that.
Yeah, thank you.
Last call? Call five here and call. I think we can call it. Same sign, little smaller, it's just something that fits, it's just a little bit faster. You know, I know they run a business, trying to get notified, and it's right, and there's three foot each, I think, much of each, each person to be there. I think they can get their letters eight inches and shrink them to 12 inches in one line instead of eight, eight plus space in the middle, so I think they can come back. That's just my, one opinion, I think they can come back with a better sign than I have.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm not really opposed to this sign, but I'm always in favor of a better sign. So, I mean, this isn't the only way to do things, I suppose, and so if the other four members think that's a good idea, or you do, I can, I would love to see that.
I'd like, I'd like to go back and look. I think they probably, I, I, my feeling is they should be closer to the zoning rights. That's the way that I feel on that intersection anyway. Regulations are there. I, I say they're there for a reason, we're here to, to offset them in cases that we deem necessary. I don't know that's necessarily beneficial to anybody to make this sign 35 of what is that big, what's permitted by zoning regulations. So I'd like to see it made smaller a little bit. I'd be, I'd be, to be honest with you, I'd be confused if I thought here place one and the deli sign on this one, I'd wanna go into that, into the parking lot if I didn't know the area. And I'd be in the wrong place, like you said, I'd have to leave there and go back.
None of those sides will be on this, it's completely separate.
So you're gonna have six separate units?
Yes.
Four on this side?
Correct.
Okay. Even, okay, I'd, I'd still prefer to see it closer to the zoning. That's, that's the way I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Board.
Mr. Chairman? If I feel the same way, I think it should be a little bit smaller, if we can accomplish the goal here, but it's not such an impact on the neighborhood.
First ditto on the hijar. This is more of a monument to me than a sign. It just looks, the way it's been reflected in pictures and laid out in size, it looks ginormous to me, there's not a word. So I'd actually like to go poke around and see if something in my little mind comes up as far as where or how it would work better, but yeah, I agree. So we're here to stretch the zoning where applicable, but not make it out of the ballpark, which I think this is really big.
May I have a please step forward? I wanna see this board vote on this today, because it's gonna be a nay, you see, if they can come back with something a little better to make us all a little happier. How long do you need?
Four weeks. Four weeks.
Thank you. Make it more than four weeks, yeah? Well, I love.
Mr. Chairman, that is Z 1752. ID sign groups were various, and so an oversized panel sign on the premises number 77 Quincy Ave, with a motion, continue here until July 11.
Second. Any motion? Stand on our favor? Close someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Very productive commentary, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Case number Z 1753, 362 Washington Street, Victor Moreno, for finding change of use of a plank to a plank thrown in supply retail store. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, 11 Park, straight north Wayman.
You have the floor. You have the floor. Tell us what you wanna do there.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to open a retail store for hydroponic equipment, with equipment and supplies, like soil, nutrients.
But it's really hard to hear at the back, and I know there's a lot of interest in his remarks. So if you can have me speak up, or if the mics can turn on? We don't have any.
We don't have any mics. Three years. Three years.
The prop. The city council, and I got phoned. If the city council has a residential.
We couldn't speak up, speak up so everyone can hear you.
Yeah, again, this is a petition to, to open a retail store, to sell hydroponic equipment. It's only equipment and supply.
Yep. Is this since the law changed?
Well, I would expect.
People would be buying this equipment and putting it in their homes and growing it around?
Yes, that would be some of my customers, yes.
Since the law has changed, I guess, then you have a place to buy this stuff, right? Where you can grow this stuff. So you won't be selling like seeds, marijuana seeds, none of that stuff, right?
No.
Okay.
No. It's, I mean, as I understand it, there is no licenses for any of that yet.
Correct.
So.
It's a big yet, yeah.
What's that?
Is it yet there, right?
No, but I'm not planning to do that. I'm planning to focus on the.
Equipment, soil, lights, stuff like that?
Just that, yes.
Air conditioning?
Perhaps a few equipment, you know, accessories, you know, like dehumifiers or small air conditioners. But that would, that would be my strongest, you know, item, if you wanna say, because those are, those items you can buy in other stores.
Yes.
I plan to specialize a little more on American equipment, American-made equipment, which are the lamps and the tents, the soils are also made here in America, and some other accessories that perhaps not made in America, but designed in America.
Any questions?
Do you have any experience doing this?
I do not have experience, because this law has just started, but I do plan to hire people that, you know, is more knowledgeable. I have, you know, trained myself a little bit, just by reading and understanding the cycles and, you know, equipments, and what the equipment does, and, you know, specifications and all that. I am myself an engineer, so I tend to be more analytical on those kinds of things. I also have a minor in administration and another minor, excuse me, in accounting. So running the business for me is gonna be more on the administrative side, and obviously understanding prices, understanding the market, trying to be respectful for anyone, because I know this can be a touchy subject, if you wanna call it that way. I plan to be respectful, I don't plan to do any advertisement, you know, and push anybody to buy my product.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. I, I have a quick question. I'm, I'm a little confused, actually, because in your very colorful tutorial here, it, it does say seeds, so what type of seeds you gonna sell if you're not gonna be selling?
Well, there are plants, like tomatoes or, you know, herbs, you know, like cooking, because this, this equipment is only to grow any certain kind of plants, you can just run.
You'll understand if I'm a little skeptical.
Yes, and I, I came out, you know, and I came out forward at the beginning, and I, I said that, yes, I understand that most of my customers are gonna be willing to grow marijuana, and, but, you can grow anything that you want. Perhaps not an avocado tree, you can probably grow tomatoes, you can probably grow lettuce, and, you know, food, you can grow food, and flowers, whatever you wanna do with this equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you, can I have a seat? So anyone here that wants to speak in favor? We step forward, just make a name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Nicholas Vardacostas, I live at 325 Washington Street in Quincy. Actually, I did purchase one of these hydroponic systems for my mom two years ago for Christmas. It is a phenomenal piece of machinery. What it does, it, we, actually, right now, my mom is growing cherry tomatoes. Previously, six months ago, we were growing dill, parsley, even, like I said, even chamomile. It's amazing. And it's organic, because my mom, she had actually planted outside tomatoes, and we had all those little squirrels come out and eat them. My mom says, I'm not gonna spend the money anymore to go out and plant anything, because they've destroyed everything. And then you get all those little parasites, you get all these little flies running around, and like I said, you don't know what's go, what's going on in your food. This way, it's in your house, you know it, smells wonderful, it's phenomenal. And I, and I, like I said, I have one, and I got my mom one. I, I just have no other further things to say.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call? Third call, call five here and call, related to the DPW, May 19, we have registered. Bob Refrums Project, I'm having no comments. Anyone opposed who are undecided? We step forward, everyone, come right down, head of line. Name and address for the record, please.
Police of Lake, Free Gray Terrace, asking my property about the butts to property. I have a long list of items on why I think this property shouldn't, this business shouldn't be here, starting with the fact that the city, the law, the potential for marijuana to be coming in there, for a wonderful neighborhood with lots of children, including the house on the left side of me that has daycare. The fact that since Bob's Auto Top closed there, every business has had a problem there. They don't have enough parking space, they don't have a place to put their snow. There, the building really should be considered to be reclassified. When George Bruce acquired, we bought it from the dog place, and we had all the CrossFit issues. I contacted him, he felt bad because he didn't get in touch with the neighborhood. I asked him if he would consider selling the building to us, you know, and then quietly he sold it to some family on Adams Street, and here we go again. Whoever runs that building has zero respect for our neighborhood. The only, the only person that didn't have problems was Bob's Auto Top, because he owned all three parcels of land across, and he was highly connected to the city officials and police who are constantly at his property. My family has been in the house for 56 years. We have been extraordinary people that have lived in this neighborhood. My daughter bought the only other house on the street on Gray Terrace. I want my grandchildren to be raised there, and now we have to face, we have to face a dog, a CrossFit, and now a potential park growing business. It's so insulting. I'd really like to, at this point, like to address the fact, maybe this building needs to be rezoned. And maybe we need to get the owners of these buildings to start being more caring of our neighborhood and I'm, and the people that lived here. Because you know what? My 80-year-old mother lives in the house, my 60-year-old sister lives in the house, I'm 56, my 71-year-old husband, who's a quietly functioning quadriplegic, my daughter, her daughter, we, and we have tenants that we enforce the fact that this is a family home, a family neighborhood, and respect our neighborhood. And every time we have problems, it comes from that building in front.
Thank you.
No, I live at Grand Paris also, she said. It's the clientele that's gonna, don't insult it. It's the clientele that's gonna come to our house. We unfortunately allowed pot to be smoked in our society, but we haven't put the laws into effect as to the people driving under the influence of pot. Now you want them driving in my neighborhood and affecting our families around that. This should be in a big box store like Home Depot, where they sell a lot of dirt and sand, and give them a category there. It doesn't belong in the residential area at all. And as my sister said, we have a daycare on one side, we have the military beside them, and then we have the homeless people hanging out in the corner right beside them. We don't need this added to our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi, Alan Rand, 49 Edison Park. We've been in that house on our, in our house for 58 years now, and it's a wonderful neighborhood, a lot of young families, young kids, and I'm against anyone that would be coming in, even though they say it's great for growing produce or vegetables, we know it's gonna be used for marijuana, and I'm totally against it, the people that would come in to purchase this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, this is Jim Kober from 41 Stewart Street. I have two kids, an eight-year-old and a six-year-old that play up in the park, which abuts this property. I have many concerns, the first one being, what's actually gonna be happening there? But I'll start with the lesser one, which is just parking. There is essentially no adequate parking for retail there. If you look at the property, you'll see that there's garage doors on the side, and cars are likely to like park up next to it. We've got kids running around, it's a very family-oriented neighborhood, somebody's gonna be hit there. God knows somebody's gonna be smoking something and like be hit there. I object to it, because even if they're not selling seeds and marijuana, it's possible that they could be selling paraphernalia, drug paraphernalia. Quite frankly, I, I find it repulsive that I have to explain to my eight-year-old kid why somebody's carrying a bong around or god forbid, smoking something out there. And then finally, even though the Commonwealth is seen to legalize mass marijuana, this is still a federal-controlled substance. And we heard in the news today that our Attorney General's gonna try to open up prosecutions for people who are doing medical marijuana. Whether you agree with that or not, this is still a very controversial area of the law, and I feel, I strongly object to having anything in the neighborhood that promotes that at this point, especially with the young children. Thank you.
Ellie McKenna, 53, Edison Park.
Mike McKenna, 53, Edison Park. And we're here to say that we're against anything opening in that building, what he's talking about as far as, once it gets running, to agree with the previous speaker, it's, it's gonna be pipes and bombs and screens and every other thing that goes along with it, attracting undesirable people to our neighborhood. And once a shop like that opens up, there's just so many little kids walking up and down those streets with the Clifford Marshall School, Point Webster School, young kids in that neighborhood don't have a chance. There's bottles, tattoo parlors, now there's gonna be marijuana stores, and I just disagree with them, because I think it's bringing our neighborhood down, and I don't think the kids in that neighborhood are gonna have a chance growing up with everything that they're seeing right outside their door. Bars, pot, tattoos. This Quincy's becoming a different city, and I know that's uncontrollable, but if we can try to not make it.
Drug friendly.
The, the way it's going, and kind of bring it back to a friendly, family place, and not just people from out of town opening businesses, going back to their own houses in Wayman or Canton or wherever, and they have a beautiful neighborhood, and we're dealing with people smoking weed out on Washington Street. So I hope you'll side with us and vote against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Daphne Sweeney, I live at 34 Stewart Street, and I'd just like to say that I totally object to this happening. I have two small children. My daughter walks down that street every day to go to Point Webster, my son goes to Clifford Marshall. This is just something that you do not need in that neighborhood. We have a great neighborhood, and we wanna keep it like that.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Park, 49 Stewart Street, and I just want you to know that I'm totally opposed to this, one, the parking, two, I also have two small children, both who will be attending Point Webster next year, and they walk by that building every day. As is, people are out there drinking, they're smoking, they're doing whatever, and we just don't need that added to our neighborhood. We have a great neighborhood, lots of people here tonight to stand up for the good neighborhood that we have, with all the young children that we have, and we wanna keep it a nice neighborhood. So I hope that you say no to this, and don't allow this in our neighborhood. And if he wants to open one, how about he open it at the end of his street and not mine?
Thank you. And not Wayman.
Yes, up the bridge.
I'm Beth McSweeney, I live at 17 Stewart Street.
I'm Don Martin, I'm on Monroe Street.
Okay, we're both, we've been in the neighborhood, I've lived my whole life in the neighborhood, my mom has lived in the neighborhood, and now my. my mother's lived in the neighborhood, and now my grandchildren have lived in the neighborhood. We want to keep it a neighborhood, we don't need extra stuff, a lot of things have been coming in, and we don't really need anything else, my grandchildren walk by, I have kids walking by, and we have a couple other problems on the streets of Washington Street, people coming up and down the street, and if you come down by our neighborhood, you'll see there's already cars with little nips all over the place, and little things, when you walk up the street, we tell the kids not to touch the stuff, we just don't want any more traffic of anywhere that comes into the neighborhood.
I'm also here to vote against this.
Yeah, I'm against it.
For the reasons that, this is a residential area, it's a strong residential area, and the good thing is, you folks get to weigh in and decide whether we're gonna let this type of thing come into this neighborhood, into a residential area or not. So we're looking forward to you to kind of side with the folks that live there on a daily basis, as Cathy says, she watches this neighborhood every day, she sees what's going on in the neighborhood, and we're trying to progress further of that, that's really all this is. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I guess I'm next.
You're up.
From what I can tell, everybody in this room is already kicked ass, is what I'm gonna say. My name's Kevin McCall, twenty-one Mill Street, and my wife Sharon, you're not last. Wash your shirt up. And I'm glad you understand that. My main concern is, number one, this gentleman knows nothing about what he's doing, number one. Number two, he lives in Wayman, take it to Wayman. Number three is that, like these other people said, it's a community that we enjoy, it's very family-oriented, all right? We have on our street, possible nine townhouses being built next door to me, that I'm fighting with right now. But, in a long story, I guess, we should also understand that he came from nowhere, he's walking into our community, trying to start something up that we all know it's gonna end up being on the long range down the road, so I hope all of you here understand where that's coming from. And that's all I can actually say, because they took all my words from me.
Your thing, we want to add is, the big thing that was hanging in what he said was "yet," and I'm afraid he's gonna get in and get this business started, so that when laws change, and he can sell stuff, he's already got the building, he's already got the zoning and all this stuff, so that "yet" really hangs, hangs there, what's gonna happen in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. McCall.
Thank you. Thank you, people.
Good evening, a border territory here, I'm a fellow myself, Ward Board Counselor Bart O'Quarr, some council of call, and Ward Two, just for a show of hands, because some of you didn't speak, and I know we're here, how many are here specifically for this application? And hands up, how many are opposed to this application? So it's on one hand, the applicant's hands go down, everybody here, if you're here tonight or they chose to speak and share, I'm not opposed. So, I'm a frequent flyer, as is Council Crawl to your board, and we'll tell you every time, when you have a bad process, you have a bad project. Blind-sided, I was blind-sided, Council Crawl and I get a copy of the zoning board agenda, it is a requirement of the filing of the zoning board application, that the ward council be contacted, didn't happen. A neighbor sees it, gets their butter notification, and texts me and says, is Pot Chat opening next to me? Blind-sided. This isn't how you start opening a business in Quincy, and not for sure in Ward one, Ward Two. So, let's talk about how we started out. Mr. Moreno didn't do his due diligence in getting his application for him, because as you all know, Brad and I would have brought this to a neighborhood meeting. I have a whole list of questions, and I'm not wasting your time, that we would have had an opportunity to understand his application, and get our questions answered, before we came up here, as we've done with all these other projects. Information I'm looking for, what's the product list, what does he intend to sell? I did call Mr. Moreno, I had to reach out to him, and he wasn't forthcoming with answers to the questions that I had, and he couldn't answer them. He told me he's never himself operated a business, he told me he never, he doesn't have any urban gardening experience with tomatoes or with marijuana, because I asked, come show me this urban garden. If I walk into Curry Hardware, I expect to get service and questions, answers for the product that they're selling. If this is what you're gonna service, can you service me, your customer? And that's what I was trying to understand, what is this business, what are you doing? How many employees? How many parking spots does he have? What are the hours of operation? I mean, nothing, no information. His attorney, I suggested to him, if you come to the zoning board for this, I suggest you retain an attorney to represent you, typically, a lot of times, we work with them at this board. He retains an attorney, we played phone tag, the attorney said to me, he's no longer servicing this client, so couldn't get any information from a professional. It was referenced that the law has changed, we're a year out from recreational marijuana, and what is going to be changed in the interim, we don't know, but my concern is, today, it's equipment, tomorrow, it's growing marijuana, and it should not be cited in a residential location, we put a lot of time into the zoning reclassification of locating medicinal marijuana up in an industrial area, much more appropriate, and I believe we'll be taking a look at not only just the recreational marijuana, but also accessory equipment, I think needs to be changed into that ordinance, so that it does not belong in a residential neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that you see, they're a very strong neighborhood, many of them have lived their families in this neighborhood for generations. It's a peaceful, quiet neighborhood till CrossFit showed up, and you all know, Mr. Duke, how much time we put in with, they were running football sleds down Edison Street, exercising in the middle of the street, you can get out of your driveway, they stenciled the streets, and the building itself is since sold, and knowing the difficulties we've had, I'm shocked that the new owner has not done any outreach either. This is the wrong fit, this is a detriment to this neighborhood, and my request is that you reject this application.
Thank you.